Good evening, everybody. We want to welcome you to the Enlarged City School District of Middletown's Board of Education meeting for Thursday, August 29th, our last board meeting before the excitement of next week's school opening. So at this time, I'd like to say that this agenda was prepared in advance of tonight's meeting. The final agenda for tonight's meeting is subject to change at the time of the meeting, and any changes will be noted at the time they're made and again after the meeting on the public board minutes, which are available on the district's website. Esta agenda fue preparada antes de la reunión de esta noche. La agenda final para la reunión de esta noche está sujeta a cambios en el momento de la reunión. Cualquier cambio se anotará en el momento en que se realice y nuevamente después de la reunión en las actas de la junta pública que están disponibles en el sitio web del distrito. And now our call to order. If we can please rise for the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Freddie Williams.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could please remain standing for a couple of moments of silence and before I hand it off to Mr. Perino, our esteemed colleague, our fellow trustee Denise Romero had a death in the family today, so she's unable to attend the meeting, and we'll honor her family member at a future meeting with a moment of silence. So at this time, Mr. Perino.
Moment of silence is for Kevin Robert Hipsman. Mr. Hipsman taught in the district for 34 years. He taught physical education. He was also a coach. Inspired students to do well not only academically, but also in the field of athletics. Kevin was honored for 50 years of coaching by the Orange County Community Association, Coaching Association. I worked with Kevin on a couple of projects to raise money for the track team. He was always available. He delivered items for the track team to the various schools to support the track team. In addition to being a coach, he was also very involved in the automotive field. His love was for Fords and more particularly Fairlanes and Mustangs. Just a very kind individual, low-keyed individual, the kind of person that we treasure in the Middletown School District. So please remember Kevin Robert Hipsman in your thoughts and prayers.
Mr. Perino, I do want to add Coach Hipsman was my track and field coach in the early 1980s. He will be sorely missed. He was chosen this past year as part of the Section 9 Track and Field Hall of Fame. So God bless you, Coach Hipsman. We'll miss you, and your legacy is carried on by Eric and Andrea and the rest of the family. So our thoughts are with you. Yep. Between Coach Willsayer and Coach Hipsman, we've lost some legends over the last couple of months. Our mission of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown, Mr. Rett.
We strive to provide fiscally sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to become competitive, productive members of society.
We want to wish our district clerk, Crystal Monchery, well as she continues to recover from an illness. So in the meantime, our new district clerk for today, Pro Tem, is Mr. Tuttle. Mr. Tuttle, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Okay. Mr. John Perino.
Here.
Mr. Ms. Rose Tobiasin.
Here.
Mr. Freddie Williams.
Here.
Mr. Mitchell Williams.
Here.
Mr. John Williams.
Here.
Mr. Edwin Estrada.
Here.
Mr. Curtis Rett.
Here.
Mr. Andrew Moore.
Here.
Ms. Denise Romero.
Thank you. I thought you forgot about me. Usually they lead the roll call off with my name, but nevertheless, great job, Mr. Tuttle. I need an approval for tonight's agenda. Moved by Mr. Rett, seconded by Ms. Tobiasin. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. There are no minutes to approve on this agenda. Does anyone have any problem with doing our personnel memorandums altogether?
No.
No? With that being said, I need an approval for Personnel Memorandum 5A, number one; Personnel Memorandum Instructional 5B, number one through 21; and Non-Instructional Personnel Memorandum 5C, one through seven.
Six.
Did I say?
No, no. It's five.
It's five? So I'm right.
Item six, but the number of the memorandum is five.
Gotcha.
Okay. That's all right. Keeping me on my toes, that's okay. So we had a motion by Ms. Tobiasin, seconded by Mr. Rett. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I need approval for Financial Memorandum 5D, numbers one through 18.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Mitchell Williams, seconded by Mr. Moore. I'm going to open up the discussion. I do want to typically, we vote on these financial memorandums, and very few times do we ever go into the detail of them, but I think I was so impressed with some of the information in the financial memorandum for this meeting that I think it's important for the public to know what we're approving tonight in regards to them. We have one, two, three, four, five of the items deal with My Brother's Keeper. And what I'm excited about those particular ones are contracts to bring in speakers that deal with financial literacy, information on HBCUs, personal finance, communication and listening skills, business world opportunities, budgeting and managing debt, and also navigating the business world. So there's a lot of speakers coming in that are going to benefit our speakers in the My Brothers Keeper program, all of that being paid for through a grant that the district has received. We also have a we're approving as part of the financial memorandum, a contract with the Orange County Department of Mental Health, which will have a clinic, a satellite clinic here, I believe at the high school or in.
Every campus we have. It's just the annual.
Every campus has got it. How many folks do they have on site? I think it's eight. Yep. Eight folks on site. We also have some Title III funding for reading comprehension for Spanish-English learners. I think that's pretty much it. We have a couple of other items, but Therapy Dogs for all of for our Mon Hagan and as well as our Maple Hellenics at Truman Moon, also UPK site with Abilities First. So a lot of good, great things happening in our financial memorandum. We have a first and we have a second. Does anybody have any further discussion? With all that being said, those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I need an approval for Special Services Memorandum 5E, numbers one and two.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. Mitchell Williams. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I need an approval of Change Order 4F, numbers one and two. Mr. Bartlett, would you like to give us some background on those?
Certainly. We have two of these change orders. They both are related to the flooring project. The first is to replace additional trazo floor in Presidential Park Cafe, and the second is to replace three small rooms of vinyl composite tile at Mon Hagan Middle School.
Thank you. Does anybody have? Did I do a motion or no? Okay, I need a motion? Moved by Ms. Tobiasin, seconded by Mr. Mitchell Williams. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I need an approval of Dignity for All Student Act Coordinators.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Andrew Moore, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? They do some fine work throughout the year. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I need approval of Civil Service 75 Law, and I think I need to read that. Be it further resolved that in accordance with Civil Service Law, Section 75, the Board of Education hereby authorizes the suspension without pay of employee number 09278 for up to 30 calendar days effective Tuesday, September 3, 2024. I need a motion?
So move.
Moved by Mr. Mitchell Williams, seconded by Mr. Rett. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I need the following approval. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of its attorneys, the Board of Education authorizes an appeal from an August 27, 2024 interim decision, an order issued by an impartial hearing reporting system, case number 637050.
So move.
Moved by Ms. Tobiasin, seconded by Mr. Mitchell Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We'll move on to Board Member Recognizations and Community Updates. We'll start off with the lonely guy on the left, Mr. Freddie Williams.
I have a couple of images that should be going up. See, "It Takes a Village" barbeque. This is happening next Saturday, September 7. Nope. Let me skip through that one. Yeah, they're kind of just running through. Can we go back to "It Takes a Village," please? Yep. So this is going on next Saturday at Davage Park, 1:30 Lake Avenue in Middletown. This is our fourth annual back-to-school event. What can I say? It's just an amazing event. The community comes together. I have a special thanks to some organizations that are doing heavy lifting. Middletown Police Department, Middletown Fire Department, the Enlarged City School District of Middletown, the city of Middletown as a whole in its entirety, Mid-City Transit, Middletown Youth Sports, Middletown Parks and Rec. I know I'm going to forget somebody, but a lot of great organizations and people coming together for this event. Like I said, it's our fourth annual. Last year, I think we handed out over 1,000 book bags. I stopped counting after 1,000. It was a really good turnout. And I'd like to thank a lot of organizations and companies that are sponsoring this year for the first time, along with returning organizations. It's an amazing event. I believe everybody sitting at these tables has been there at one time or another, so we're just hoping for some good weather and multiple activities, a plethora of activities going on. We will have, we have a Facebook events page, "It Takes a Village," and we will be adding all the activities noted that are going to happen on that day also. So I'm very excited for it. The kids are excited. It should be another great day. We can move on to the next. Also, I want to add, today at "It Takes a Village," myself and Mitchell Williams, can't forget you, four years ago, we drummed up an idea, and it turned into something that what it is today, and it's an amazing thing that's going on. So I just wanted to acknowledge you too, brother. Can't forget you. Moving on to MBK, My Brother's Keeper. Excited. I am the longest-running mentor of the MBK program, so when it came into the district, I've been on, and I've seen it grow and grow, and this year I'm especially excited. We're hitting the ground running. Myself, Andrew Moore, Mr. Curtis Rett, Mr. Mitchell Williams, we're, you know, we're heavily involved, and I'm very excited for it. This is a great, great program that is just going to get better and better from what I see. So I look forward to that this year, and it's starting. As soon as the first day of school hits, we'll be off and running, so I look forward to that and building with mentors and advisory board of the men sitting here today. And I'm good for the next one. Also, I keep, I have to keep retracting. Going back to the MBK, the directors, Mr. Kenneth Ward and Everton Brown are doing an excellent job, excellent job with the MBK program. So I'm sorry, I'm making the tech team work hard tonight. So I want to thank, I want to thank Kenneth Ward and Everton Brown. You guys are doing an amazing job. Now we can move forward. And this is the winning team for the seventh, eighth grade division in the MIS Summer League of this summer. These guys worked hard. They ended up with an 8-0 record, running all the way through undefeated, and got challenged. They got challenged that, the final game, the championship game. It was a back-and-forth game. I think they ended up winning by seven. So I want to, I want to give a salute to my partner Everton Brown and MIS for help organizing the Summer League, and Coach Ed Ayala is up there with the, with the team. You know, me and Coach Everton, we don't coach. They think it's biased, so we kind of let the other people do what they do, and we just organize it. It was great. The parents were great. The kids were great. The energy was awesome. So this was our second annual Summer League, and we look forward to, you know, to the next one. And thank you for the support of Mr. Mitchell Williams. You know, it's a great thing for the kids. We haven't had a basketball Summer League out here in I don't know how long, and we were able to pull it together last year and this year, so we look forward to, you know, moving forward with it. We got to get some, Mr. Curtis Rett came out, and we got to get Andrew Moore out there. I know he's a basketball guy. We got to get him out there and, you know, do some skills and drills or something. One of the kids might challenge you, because these kids are very confident. But, so, yeah, that's it. It was a tremendous summer. We did a lot of good things, a lot of trainings, and the Summer League came, came and went, and it was just awesome. I want to thank Middletown Athletics and the Superintendent Creedon for the opportunity to use the facility at Mon Hagan. Those courts are awesome. If you haven't seen them, there are awesome courts out there, so that's what I have. Thank you.
And Mr. Williams, again, how, and you might have mentioned it, and I apologize if I missed it, how can people still donate towards the village?
Yes. So I would, I would go to the Facebook page of "It Takes a Village," get a message on there. Myself, Mitchell Williams, and Mrs. Monchery, we're on there. We stay active on that page. You can donate all the way up to that day. You can bring donations the day of, even if you have to. We're doing a, I believe, Mrs. Creedon said that the district had bags here. I'm a drop-off spot also, 6 West Main, my barber shop, 6 West Barber Shop. But yeah, all the way up to the day of, you can, you can bring, book bags is what we're really looking for, since the district supplies the supplies, so.
And also as an incentive, not an incentive, but as a suggestion, we, I made this suggestion at our new teacher orientation earlier this week, that if you're not, if you're an employee of the district, but you don't live in Middletown, come on out. It's a great way to bring your own family and your own kids and connect with the Middletown community. You'll see some of your students.
Yeah.
Out there. So it's a really cool way.
The layers of it, from the police department to the fire department to the, right.
Yeah. I brought my niece from New Jersey.
Right.
Who was eight years old, and she got to work the hose.
Yeah.
With the fire department, and so.
The element is awesome, just to, you know, see the police department in a different realm, and the fire department, even your teachers and your admins, and it's an awesome thing. I definitely advise that everybody come out with their families and have some fun.
Cool.
And everything is free. I forgot that. I need to put that in there.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work and Mitchell's hard work with it as well.
No problem.
Mr. Tobiasin.
Sorry to regret, but I've been on vacation, so I have not been participating. I'm back.
We all need the summer R and R. Mr. Rett.
Good evening, everyone. A lot of opportunities for children to get involved in activities throughout Middletown. Just to piggyback on what Freddie Williams is saying, I have a couple of visuals that should be coming up on the screen. This is one of our second year of Love Our City. It's a national organization, and.
Nice shorts.
A wonderful time of this. Yeah, yeah. I was coordinating a little bit there. But I was honored to host this event. We had several people I want to thank. I want to thank the city of Middletown, New York, and Joe DiStefano and his team, God's Hearts for Women, and their president Pamela Hilton. We had the Greater Middletown Interfaith Council, as well as New Beginnings Church, and I can't forget, if I would be remiss if I did not add, the police department came out, and they was cooking hot dogs and hamburgers. And this is the team, and this is the setup out there at Watts Park, at Thrall Park, and it was a wonderful opportunity. So again, it was great just to be a part of that. Moving right along, we have one of Middletown's finest, Brittany Durellis. She had, she had the Team Leadership Club at the YMCA, and they had a little car wash going on the other week to raise some funds for their leaders club, and that went well also, so kudos to them, and let's keep it moving. Busy summer, a lot of good things going on. This is something that's going on on Thursday, September 5, the Police Community Council's Summer Cookout. That's on 8 West Warren Drive at the community center over there. That starts at 6:00 PM. Again, food, music, drinks, opportunities for children to really indulge and just enjoy some of the festivities that's going around our city of Middletown. And one more, I believe, yes. Giving you an early heads-up on this, this is the Annual Unity Fair that we have at the YMCA. It's a wonderful occasion. We have vendors, music, games, entertainment. It's just a great cultural opportunity. It's not too late if you want to get invested in having a table where you can just be able to present some information, things that will, that the community can take advantage of. It's really a special time, so please try to come out for that. I believe that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rett. Mr. Perino.
Thank you, President Estrada. The Elks on the 17th of August had a distribution of school supplies and a breakfast for our students. There were approximately, throughout the morning, there were, there were around 250 families attended, so we had good attendance there. And in addition to the distribution of school supplies, in this distribution, there were backpacks, binders, all sorts of writing instruments, and other items. So after the distribution, breakfast was served, and the breakfast consisted of pancakes, sausages, bacon, orange juice, on and on and on. So it was really a very good morning, and now with Fred's program, our students should be pretty well equipped. In addition to the breakfast, there was a soccer shoe on the field, the YMCA, so everything went very well on that. I also want to say, and I know we have high school members of the staff here, graduation was excellent, the summer, the summer graduation, it was just, it was just great. Couldn't have gone any smoother. Ashley Merchant and her team and the other administrators of the high school, very good. And I have to give a shout-out to our Vice President Mitch Williams. Mitch, you should be a professional speech writer. The speech was excellent, the delivery was excellent, and the follow-up was good. And at the end of the graduation.
You should have seen how nervous he was when I said to him, "I'm sick and cannot attend." He was like, "What?"
It went very well. And at the end of the graduation ceremony, Mitch Williams gave a whistle, which Kurt Rett said was imported from the Bronx. You want to give that whistle, Mitch? That woke everybody up. Very good. Nice job, Mitch, on that graduation.
Yes, yes.
Yonder Pouch's workshops were very good. I attended one of the middle school, the middle school administrators were there, and I attended one at the high school. Kate Shidi and one of the interns conducted that and explaining the rationale, how it was going to work. It really was, it really was a nice experience for the people who attended, and we also did virtual workshops. I also want to commend our Buildings and Grounds Custodial Staff. The whole board took a tour of the facilities, and there's some photos of that. That happens to be the Mon Hagan cafeteria, and if you look around, I, the schools looked, the schools were excellent, excellent condition, very much so given the fact that we had attendance, we had summer school in the buildings. Now, many of the districts around here do not have summer school. They have a very limited summer school. Ours was very extensive, so again, a shout-out, Bill, to your crew, to your custodians, and so on. You know, as a district, we are very proactive in what we do to maintain the buildings. For example, at the high school, we replaced a boiler plant this summer. I mean, we probably could have limped along with that, but you don't want boilers going out in January and February. We did a lot of safety work this summer, classroom identifications on exterior windows, for example, at Carter, door swipes at the various buildings. We also replaced at the Twin Towers, who were doing a huge project, and we replaced the building windows, and we improved the courtyard, so on and on. So I divided that tour. We had safety, we had being proactive, and the betterment of the environment for our students. And you saw the Mon Hagan cafeteria. We also had a Carter, the canopy and improvement of parking areas. We had flooring at Mon Hagan, on and on and on. So good job, good job by members of our board for taking that tour. Was kind of long, but it was good. Going on for just another minute, the attending last evening, the Twin Towers orientation for the new students. There were about, I would say, well over 200, probably around 250 parents and students there. Kind of neat, they had the members of the Twin Honor Society in, along with staff members. I want to compliment the staff members at Twin who showed up, because they did this on a volunteer basis. The parents toured the, toured the building with the members of the administrators, while the student, the Honor Society students accompanied the new students to the various areas of the building. They also had, and this is good, the new students, a chance to practice with the combination locks. I remember going to high school. Our orientation consisted of the seniors coming out and saying, "Mr. Finch wants you to get off the grass." And we didn't have much of an orientation, but I tell you, the orientations today are just wonderful. And finally, the new teacher orientation, that occurred on Monday of, Monday of this week. Couldn't have been any, couldn't have been any better. Again, when I started teaching, the department chair, we gave us room keys and registers and said, as I mentioned, that the orientation handle anything that comes in through the door.
Good luck.
And don't smile until Christmas, so.
Yeah, I remember that.
So good. I'm done, I could go on, but I don't want to go over, take too much time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore?
Yes, uh, so as you, as you know, I'm, I'm still new here and I actually forgot to send in the pictures, so I do apologize, but I do have some stuff I want to discuss, um, that I was able to attend and also had a privilege to, uh, be around. First, I want to start off with, um, I'll start with the district first and I'll, you know, edge out towards my other, um, talking points. First, I want to start off with the tour. I was actually pretty, pretty impressed, um, just knowing the factors that, uh, the district has been under, uh, since the start of the summer. And the custodial staff to be able to get everything up and running in literally, I believe it was four or five days, to say, and the place was extremely spotless. You would never think that they removed all the furniture, did the floors stripped. It was just pretty impressive to see, so kudos to the entire, uh, custodial staff. The admin team, um, in the buildings, the warm welcome, the, uh, visual representation for everyone, the food, everything. Kudos to you guys, because I know the days were very long and many of them didn't get home probably till 11:00, um, especially with the tour that, you know, it was pretty, it was pretty good. To the high school team and, uh, just to, I'm not going to expose too much of it, because I want it to be excitement once the kids start, uh, the new school year, but the visualization of, of the success that the district has been going through, uh, you'll be pretty excited once they step in the doors, uh, next week. So kudos to you guys with that. To the cabinet team, uh, your tremendous work, uh, with the new teacher orientation and everything that's been in place. A lot of people don't really understand, you know, although we are away as a parent and teachers are off for the summer, um, the cabinet and the administrative staff are consistently working to improve, to get better. So it's a lot of work and a lot of hours, so especially this week. So kudos to your strength and I'm pretty sure you're looking forward to tomorrow to be able to take a couple of days off, but, um, we definitely appreciate the hard work that you guys have been doing. To fast forward now to some things that I was able to take part in, um, this past, I'll be with about a week or so, I got back from vacation, but, uh, Fusion Barber Shop was honored by the, uh, Middletown City for the 20 years of service. And it was, it was pretty impressive, um, because now I started to get more of the backend story of the historic aspect when it comes to, uh, certain individuals in the community. Just to mention a few, Rahil Steele, Idris Daniels, and Ramel Marcus, who, who now oversees the entire establishment. But what really took place, they had like a post, um, celebratory, um, you know, you know, commentary that was held at Sadie's Bookstore. It was interesting to hear the backend stories of the individuals that got into the field of barber shop as, as a profession, as a, you know, hairstylist and someone that does, that work. Many of the young men that are now there either could have been incarcerated, may have been through, um, certain life trauma situations, but they have changed their life. And a lot of it, everyone knows, the barber shop is a huge, it's like our, as a male, is our form of therapy, right? So profession goes beyond just cutting hair. But what was so remarkable there was the standard that they have set throughout, you know, Middletown and how the founders, uh, Raul and Idris had left the, the trajectory going forward for the next generation. And many of our students go there for services. So that was something that, that took, you know, took me into realizing how much of the legacy and, you know, the comout, the camaraderie within the district and in the city stemmed from, you know, such establishments as the barber shop. Lastly, I just want to discuss, I am currently, uh, took on another role, I don't know how I'm doing it, but I do it. I took another role as a, um, AU coach for girls' basketball. I'm with, uh, New York's finest, uh, ladies' finest basketball program, which is 11U to 13U. It started out last year as a developmental program and we had about seven to eight students, my daughters included, on there, and now we've expanded, um, now moving into the fall season. Uh, no one expected us to do so well, uh, traveling from, from Albany all the way down to PA, Maryland, um, and being able to be at that level of competition at such a young age. And they've been pretty successful as far as winning championships, et cetera. Oh, well, tomorrow, um, at 6:00 PM in Circleville, we'll be hosting the second part of our tryouts for 11 to 13U, uh, girls' basketball program. So if you have any young ladies out there that's interested in playing, uh, we're pretty competitive. Anyone that knows me, you know, I strive for beyond just the present moment, it's always for the future. So looking forward to seeing everyone come out to that. And, uh, that wraps up my community reports. Thanks.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Mitchell Williams?
Yeah, I want to, um, start off by, uh, thanking the high school team for the opportunity to speak at the summer graduation. I also just want to say how impressed I am of the job that you all have done, um, Mr. Donahue, Shidi, Ashley, and the whole core team. Because the reality is like the year, and I'm just, not just talking about the summer, that year started, it started off kind of rough. It was a rough year from with all those suspensions and different things like that, um, Yonder, then the executive principal was gone, God bless her. You know, I gotta go home. But these are hits. These are hits that y'all, that y'all took care of and y'all still brought it home, all the way home. I, I, I was so impressed with seeing the kids who got suspended and they were suspended, you know, because they did something and they had to deal with what they did and that's, but y'all never gave up on them. And they were so happy and so grateful to walk across that stage with that cap and gown. And that's what it's about, because we don't give up on our kids. And you showed that. You showed that. And I'm just so impressed by that and I just give you, uh, so much, um, honor and praise for that. And once again, then you brought it home with the highest graduate, graduation, graduation rate ever, still with all of those obstacles. So that's something to be celebrated. So I celebrate you for that. Next, I want to, uh, just definitely, uh, congratulate Miguel, Wendy, Rob, and Alicia for they had, they hosted, uh, Middletown U football, they hosted the scrimmage game here on our facilities. And of course, thank, uh, Amy and Dave and Kevin. And it went on as a success, he was very excited about it, so that went out great. Um, the next thing is, it's, alright, so it's rare, you know, when you, when you have your, your child, uh, say they apologize for how they were acting when they were teenagers. So my daughter said, "You know, Dad, I want to apologize for y'all making me do all the things that y'all would make me do." Because, you know, we would have this thing, I'd be like, "You go in to do dance." She'd be like, "Do I have a choice? No, but I'm trying to be nice and ask." So she said, "I apologize for being a brat when you was making me do all these things." She said, "Because now I'm out in the world and I see the relevance of these things, so I'm able to assert myself, I'm able to walk in any room and be confident in any room." And she said, "I just want to thank Brittany from Leaders. I want to thank Nikki from being her cheerleading coach when she was like three. I want to thank Ray Lynn for giving me the opportunity at the Parks and Rec and being, even being a lifeguard." And she wanted to thank Ebony from Dance Diamond. She said, "I want to thank them, you know, for helping me to develop." Like you was just, Kurt, you was talking about that Leaders Program. Sometimes your kids, they don't talk to you. I remember she would go to Leaders, at first she didn't want to go to Leaders, then she liked to go to Leaders, because she could talk to Brittany and they could all talk and different things like that. And, and it was, helped develop her as a person. So that's why I truly believe in this, "It takes a village" thing, because I've benefited from the village, as I've said before. And lastly, I just want to commend and thank Ms. Sorrentino, who has always been a part of my village. I know a lot of times I'll talk about my daughter, but I had sons too. They were a little bit different than my daughter. Yes, they, yes, yes. And, um, she was their principal in middle school and their principal in high school, and she always stayed connected with them, always. And once again, that says something, that says that I'm not, it's not just about this. It's not just about this. So I commend this village for the job that we are doing for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I can't, I'm not. I'm so glad that, that, um, I was sick and you got. And you got, I, because I, I remember when I said, "Hey Mitch, I, I can't make it." Unfortunately, my family went through COVID, all three of us, and I said, "I can't, it's too close to school to try to infect the whole world again." So he goes, "What are you talking about?" I said, "What should I say?" I'm like, "You figure it out." And he's a great speaker, um, he's a lot better motivator than I am, so I, I knew he would do just fine. So congratulations. You ready for June? Look at his face.
January.
Uh, January, yeah, that's right. So, um, my message is, is kind of following back. First of all, I do want to thank, um, all of the building administrators for gracing us and allowing us to come into the buildings, um, on, was it Monday, Tuesday? And I know it was late for some of them. We started the tours around, um, 6 o'clock and we ended around, uh, almost 9:30. And I know some of you had orientations that same day with parents. I was encouraged because a lot of the questions we asked was, "How was participation at the orientations?" And it seems like, um, our students and our parents were engaged, which is what we want at this time of year. You know, as we move forward into next week, um, no, there is one thing that I can guarantee for next week, and that's that not everything will go perfect. So as parents, please have patience, especially on the first day in regards to bus routes. Our partners at Mid-City Transit are not trying to ruin your day. They're trying to make it as perfect as possible. We, but we know that some students, some students will get late to the school bus stop and they're not going to leave them behind, so that'll make things late, um, uh, down the road. Please note, um, and I think we've included it on our, a, a letter out to some of our families, especially at the high school and at Twin Towers, that there is a lot of sidewalk construction going on throughout the city of Middletown. So, um, some of the walking routes for our students are going to be a little bit challenging, um, so please be prepared, please talk to your scholars about, uh, uh, safety first when it comes to having to go onto the street as opposed to the sidewalk. And if they see the other sides clear, perhaps making sure they walk over to the other side, instead of walking in front of vehicles. So, um, give yourself some extra time if you're walking to school, especially at Twin and especially at the high school. Our Buildings and Grounds staff, best in the world. I mean, uh, the, the, if, if you guys are able to go out as parents and see some of our buildings on the inside, you can eat off of these floors, um, the way that, that they're made. I wouldn't recommend it, but you can still eat off those floors. With that being said, I'll kind of repeat what I mentioned to the, the new teachers on Tuesday. I want to thank all of you from the bottom of all of our hearts for all of the hard work that you've done in the past and you continue to do on behalf of the school district. It does not go unnoticed by the nine individuals sitting here representing the community. And we know it's not easy. We know that there are days when you're just asking yourself, "Why am I here? Am I, um, doing the right thing?" You know, we have, I, I think teaching in Middletown, it takes a lot of heart and a lot of courage. In addition, you know, we do get paid, but nevertheless, you know, we don't get paid like the folks out in Long Island and we understand that. But we have a lot of special students here, a lot, and I mean special in a good way. Our scholars really want mentors in their teachers. And so some days, they're going to come into class and you're going to wonder, "They're not here." And it's important for us to understand that our students, some of them are coming into class hungry, some of them are coming into class embarrassed by wherever it is their environment that they're coming from. And it's important for us to, as educators and support staff, to understand that. I don't think anybody comes to school trying to be a bad person. I don't think any of our employees come to school trying to teach badly or, 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 you know, not give A1 effort. But we all know that we have things that happen at home for a variety of different reasons and it makes things challenging on occasion. But if we take a deep breath and we think about the fact that it does take the village and we're all in it together, um, we'll get through that one bad day and it'll be followed by a good day guaranteed. But I, I'm looking out at, um, our administrators and our staff out here and we have 100%, I, I know many of you for many, many years and I have 100% confidence, if I still had kids in the district, I would tell them, "They're your parents," when they leave the door. So, um, in regards to the Yonder Pouches and the middle schools, they're here to stay, folks. I, I mentioned this, um, I think at the last school board meeting. So, um, the communication to our parents is, "They are here to stay." And if you read the news, you know that it's happening now at every school district in New York State and it's happening nationwide. And rest assured, Middletown was one of the first ones, um, to start it. So, um, be proud of that. But in the meantime, now that we've expanded out to the middle schools, be aware that this is here to stay. And your job as parents is to make it easier for the student to understand that or not. And so, um, I encourage you to have that conversation with your child at home, um, to be prepared to be without their cellphone, um, during the school day. They will benefit from it immensely and perhaps even, you know, on occasion, you bring it home and they don't use it at home either every once in a while. So, um, I'm off my soapbox, I don't do it as well as Pastor Williams or Mr. Mitchell Williams over here, but the message is set out. So we'll move on on the agenda. Our next, uh, area is the opportunity to address the board. A reminder that the board will designate a portion of its meeting agenda for public comment for a period of up to 40 minutes. Each speaker will be allowed up to four minutes and the public, public is not permitted to discuss topics under matters involving specific individuals. Speakers must sign in prior to speaking and they're not permitted to cede their time to other speakers. And I'll add to that, that I've said at every meeting since I've become, become, uh, board president, is that there is no warning anymore in regards to use of inappropriate language of vulgarity at the podium. If that happens, your microphone will be shut and your public commentary will be over. So that would being said, is there anybody who would like to address the board at this time? How are you? Should be a little green light, that'll.
Is it on now?
Yeah, it is.
I just wanted to say something. My name is Mr. Everton Brown, um, one of the co-directors of MBK. And, uh, I just wanted to say something. Good evening. I'd like to take a moment to thank the board members Freddie Williams, Mitchell Williams, Superintendent Amy Creedon, Assistant Superintend, Superintendent Adoma, Executive Principal William, William Donahue, MBK co-director Kenneth Ward, Mr. Michael Tuttle, Robin Poole, and Dr. Cornell for the incredible support that they have given me in this process of getting this MBK thing off the ground. We've had it going on four years now. This is the fifth year and we're actually going to have something going on in September. Like it's not starting in January, it's not starting in March, it's starting in September. We have a, we have a preliminary schedule set. We have college visits, we have, uh, a, a, a possible trip to HBCUs in, um, Maryland and DC. We have dynamic speakers coming in and I'd just like to thank everybody for supporting and getting this done, especially Executive Principal, William Donahue. All right? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Brown. Good luck. Would anyone else like to speak to the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to, um, I don't think we have any letters, right? Okay. We'll move on to our superintendent updates. There are, um, five items that we're going to cover during the superintendent's update, but I also asked the superintendent if she can give us a brief synopsis for our parents who might be listening in regards to school opening next week.
Great, thank you, President Estrada. Um, just a reminder to our families that our first day of the school year is September 4th. It is incredibly exciting to officially welcome back families to a brand new school year. Beginnings are magical, filled with lots of possibilities. And so for educators and staff inside schools, the start of a school year is always exciting. We want to thank our families who came out, um, this summer for the various open house and orientation type events that we did. We had great participation and- We had great participation and felt really valued by our families, so that was super. If you are looking for specific information about opening, need information about transportation or anything related to the opening of school, please go to the website for additional information. At the website, you can find things like what September will look like, what opening looks like at each of the campuses, school lunch menus, and how to access Infinite Campus, which is the parent portal where all of the information about your schedule and transportation is listed. If you need any assistance with any of them, it's really easy to access school contact information off the website. Someone's glad to help you. I want to make sure that from myself, our cabinet team, and our entire administrators and staff, we thank the Board of Education for their participation in the facilities tours this week. It was really a wonderful evening. We were happy to feel the support by the Board of Education and get to show off to you how we are ready for school to start. Especially thank you to the administrators, many of whom are here this evening. It is an honor to work alongside administrators who are just so incredibly dedicated. We have been together all summer, working on lots of projects for opening of school, and the anticipation and excitement just is building as we get closer and closer. I know that they're feeling it. They're a bit tired, but they're feeling it. And so, you know, it was really honorable to be able to work alongside such incredible people. Our Buildings and Grounds team, wow. We have done some major work inside buildings this summer. And as we were doing our prep to be prepared for the board tours, I was visiting schools and checking in on things. And when I left last week on Friday, I said, well, we're going to have to just talk to the board about, there's a few more days to go, we're going to get it ready. And when we came in, I was like, whoa, we got it ready. Like, they moved mountains, the Buildings and Grounds team. What an outstanding job, outstanding job. And we thank the many members... We thank the many members of the Buildings and Grounds team who were able to pop over when we did the school tours. It was really nice to be able to see their smiling faces beaming with pride about what's happening on the interior of our schools, but also all of the work that the Buildings and Grounds team does on the exterior to get the schools ready. They were out here this afternoon, asking us to move our cars every so often because they're resealing the parking lot and painting fresh numbers, and it just, the list goes on and on, it's endless. So really great job there. I want to thank our food service director and assistant director and the entire food and nutrition services team. They make sure that we have healthy nutritious meals. But this summer, they have been working really hard to make sure that the administrative team is well-nourished when we come together to plan. And so we've been together all week this week, and they have provided us with outstanding meals. We have been really pleased with what we've had an opportunity to sample. It's tasted delicious, and we can't wait for tomorrow's breakfast, bright and early. So just a reminder again, as I close out, and thanks to our families for all their support the first day of school is September 4th. Let's go into this new school year, like I said, trusting in the magic of, you know, new beginnings, filled with hope and joy and excitement. We want our young people to know that we're here and we are ready to receive them and welcome them back, so that our hallways are filled with their smiling faces. Let's go make some legacies. Thank you. And we have five really incredible presentations tonight. It is a jam-packed house with all of our presenters, who've been busy all summer with lots of incredible programs. So we are going to start tonight by taking our victory lap on attendance updates. So I'm going to ask Mrs. Brott, Director of E&amp;L Bilingual, and Mrs. Farrar, our accountability analyst, to come on up and share some attendance updates with the community.
Hello, good evening. President Estrada, Vice President Williams, esteemed members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Creedon, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Tuttle, Ms. Adoma, District Cabinet, and of course, our community members. We're honored this evening to take a few moments to provide you with updates for priority on attendance. And so the slide deck will be coming up shortly, but we would like to just start off with mentioning that this presentation was a group effort. We have had a few years now of working on attendance committee that started the foundation prior to our work last year, and we wanted to especially thank those members that were consisted of the community, parent voices, scholar voices, staff, teachers, educators, support from our superintendent, and just to give a shout-out to representation from the board, to Mr. Curtis Rett for his voice, input, and commitment to this work. So with that, this presentation tonight is brief, but it is an important update, and it is available also in Spanish. And so to advance to the next slide, you're going to see, oh, I'm sorry? I think the...
No, we have to tell them.
They said that we were having some technical difficulties, but I'll try it. Doesn't work.
No.
So if we could go to the next slide. And on the next slide, it's going to actually show, when they turn that there, is actually our goal for this attendance priority. I'm sorry, they're having some technical difficulty, so I'll go right ahead and reiterate what that goal is. Basically, the goal, based on the strategic plan, which we have as our, not only to attain it, but hopefully to exceed it, is to ensure that each scholar attends school at a minimum attendance rate of ninety-five percent in order to afford the opportunity to meet each scholar's potential. And so as the slide deck starts to advance with our tech team, we just wanted to give a little bit of a brief overview of basically what work was done prior. And so the committee had the prior objective of basically working on such things as attendance letters, having alignment across the district, outlined an attendance monitoring, an intervention that we had. And at the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, basically, we had approved the attendance policy, which is available on board docs, and also a detailed supporting document called 7110R, which is the procedure and protocols that are imparted as a support for that. And I'm just thinking that technology's working on that, so the public can see that.
Yeah, the screen in front of me says standby, but it has said that since you started, so I would just keep going.
All right, fantastic. So I just want to say to everyone here and everyone there, thank you for your patience. This is an important presentation for you to actually view. It'll be available, as I had said, but in the essence of time, we just want to talk about some key milestones also that were accomplished during this time. For example, I just said we had the revamped and updated attendance policy and the detailed procedure, which we're going to talk about, just to give a few highlights tonight. There was inclusive involvement from varied stakeholders. Again, this work was not done in isolation or in silos, it was a true community effort. We even had past graduates come back as scholars and give their voices from what they experienced and what they were hoping for for our future legacy makers. Additionally, we had streamlined family communication, and one of the highlights that we'll share tonight is each building has a specific email, so families have ease of contact with our schools. And also just a deepened family support and connection that has been linked through this critical work. Additionally, our goals from last year, they are still standing, and that was basically the ninety-five percent that we spoke about. We had clarified definitions around attendance, chronic absenteeism, which was not included prior in the policy that we had outlined, and that there would be a full understanding by all educators, staff, and the community, just in regard to what is expected for the goals and for moving forward for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So for example, just a little sneak peek into some of the hard work, was that right before school ended, we already started the training. And we have to give a shout-out to the entire tech team, because they started training clerical, homeschool liaisons, school support facilitators. And our goal through training that is coming up at the beginning of the school year is to basically have all of the staff trained before the end of September. Goal is through some training that we have that's required by September 6th. So there'd be a vast knowledge of what the expectations are moving forward to support our scholars and our families. We're going to continue this year to progress, monitor. So if you would just advance a few slides, so we can get to the one that has the hand raised, like a high five, okay? We're going to go ahead, there it is. We're going to go ahead and monitor towards that ninety-five percent. So this is a year, our first year of implementation of the revamped procedure. Moving forward, in the next slide, if you advance, you'll also see some numbers that we would like to share with you. And at this point, I'm going to ask that they advance to the next slide after that, and Ms. Farrar is going to talk a little bit about the impact and some, something positive like that. Number ninety-three keeps standing out lately, so I think you'll enjoy hearing this next part.
Thank you. So we made significant progress as a district within our schools, every school, different levels, elementary, middle, and high school. And we moved our overall district attendance rate from eighty-nine percent in twenty-two, twenty-three to ninety-three percent in twenty-three, twenty-four. Five percent, that is significant. It was divided into elementary, middle, and high school, just so you can see where the difference was. Certainly, the elementary had a three percent increase. Those students have to get into the habit of coming to school, so that is a critical piece to get into that position. We provided specific rates tonight for what the end-of-year attendance were, and they're shown on the screen. We have a ninety-four percent at Monhegan and Carter, hands out to them. And behind them, we have the ranges from ninety-two and ninety-three percent. Everybody did fantastic, there were increases across the board, so really, last year is the baseline. That was when attendance got really identified as a district, high district priority, although it's certainly always been a priority. And so this will be our baseline moving forward for our analysis and monitoring for this year. So in supporting the ninety-five percent student attendance goal, the committee developed a attendance procedure, the 7110R, which is directly related to the new attendance policy. And in the procedure, which is an internal process, we again clarified and provided examples, I still need it in English, please? Thank you. Provided examples of, to the community into what was an excused absence, what was unexcused. So there was a better understanding, because that was never previously clarified and defined. And to assist in this process, we took information from previous committees that had worked on this, from our very comprehensive committee, and we developed a nine-step attendance monitoring and protocol guideline, which at different intervals, and they're identified here in terms of the days that we would reach out to the families, there are specific steps at each of these intervals, and different ways to reach out to the parent, to get them involved. And all of the HS, the homeschool liaisons, and all of the support people within the district have already been trained, and they're ready to go in terms of starting the monitoring immediately when school opens.
Okay, and on the next slide, if you advance also, you'll also see just some additional highlights, some of the things that will really make those homeschool connections and bring us really as steadfast partners together for the success of our scholars. So one of the things that I spoke about just earlier was about the faster and easier communication, and really, all families can really reach out, connect with us in regard to each building have a specific email related to attendance. Similarly, understanding that, you know, things happen in life and communication is really critical, to allow families at least five days to provide a written communication. And so we live in the digital age, as we know, so, you know, you can go old-school and write a letter, but you can also just send us an email, and that will count as well. Student support facilitators, our homeschool liaisons, the district has been so supportive, Board of Education as well, in making sure that the support is there for our scholars and families. So each building is equipped with support staff ready to assist at a moment's notice. Additionally, just attendance record-keeping guidelines and updated attendance codes make the process easier, and it's more defined and clarified for staff. And we just rolled out best attendance practices with monitoring for recommendation. We just trained our administrative staff today, who are eager and ready to go to continue the trajectory towards success, and also the staff training that we discussed as well. And moving forward on the next slide, the one after that, you're going to see another family connection, community connection. And we have prepared slides for ease of understanding for our families that has been translated. And we also have a system to ensure that any barrier for communication of the families reaching out to us, or vice versa, us reaching out to them, is supported through the amount of support, large amount of support and translation interpretation the district has offered. We have many updated materials, and if technology would be as so kind to click on the top link there, that's blue, hopefully that will link up to a presentation for our families to see. If they just click right on that blue piece that says attendance information slides for Okay, if not, families, you know, take a moment, because this is, be right at your fingertips, to please do that, and just take a few minutes. I'm sure this will be shown also at open houses, just some tips for continued support, and maybe some partnerships that you might need, and partnerships that we'll need along with you. So, you know, that's available for you as well. And if we continue on, we're going to start to close our presentation with any questions. We would like the community, our staff, to know, we are here to support you along the way. Again, this is the first year with this specific, what we call recipe, delicious recipe for success, through nine steps and key important ingredients, and along the way, just really working together in true partnership to continue everything that's best for our scholars here in the Middletown City School District. So thank you for your time, and we'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. We'll go around the table. We'll start off with Mr. Moore.
I just want to say, I definitely like the step moving forward, and looking forward to us obtaining that goal that you have set forward. You definitely have my support and other colleagues as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Perino.
Thank you, President Estrada. Nice job, folks. We've made great strides, and one of the reasons for this, I believe, is the, our facilities. Very warm and inviting, the programs are great. Students want to come to these buildings. We were in, as mentioned before and Ed mentioned, we were in these buildings earlier this week. Teachers were already there preparing the rooms, the rooms looked very inviting. Bulletin boards were being set up or were set up, so that's one of the big reasons, I think. I give a lot of credit to our staff and our program, so, good. Keep up the good work on this, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Mr. Rett.
Yes, really enjoyed the presentation, and looking forward to work with you guys another year. I liked how you continued to refine things and just find out more of how, what the numbers are yielding, so that you can make things better as far as reaching the goal of ninety-five percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rett. Mr. Bison.
I want to thank you for the presentation. It was extremely informative, despite the technical difficulties, and both of you kept your poise and just kept continuing. So having head opportunities like that and know the embarrassment to yourself, well, well done there. I think I kind of laughed when I remember the old days, and you had to have a note when you were absent, and now you folks saying, you can email it, so the progress that we've made. But... But a very, very informative presentation, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bison, Mr. Freddie Williams.
Yes, thank you for the presentation, it was awesome. And also thank you for your effort and energy. You can kind of feel it, you know, and that you guys really care, and that's super important in any realm of the school universe. So really appreciate you guys, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freddie Williams, Mr. Mitchell Williams.
Excellent presentation, I just had one question. What was the William A. Carter percentage again? No, I wasn't sure if everybody knew.
Ninety-four percent.
It was 94?
And what was the Mon, what was the Monhegan one?
If you want any competition going on.
It was, it was. It was 94, okay.
You said Carter was.
William A. Carter.
Carter was 94, right?
Carter was 94. He's 94 too at Monhegan.
And then what was, what was?
I got the mic right now.
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four is Monhegan.
So Drew, we, we, we got, we got, we did that too. Me and Drew were over at Monhegan. I'm just saying.
Building rep.
I'm just saying.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right, get him Freddie.
Yeah, yeah, we can't just let him, Drew can't just let him, you know.
Even Steven, William A. Carter.
So, you know, as part of this, I do want the Board of Education to take a bow. Because one of, not that attendance was never, not a goal, but you guys at the board table made it a priority. And for folks who don't know out in the public realm, Boards of Education, one of the things they do during this time of year, during the summer, while everyone else is hopefully enjoying a little bit of R and R, is we are putting together board goals. And what, and more from a general perspective, which then Central Office and the Superintendent is charged with her staff to then try to meet some objectives towards those goals. So attendance was one of the school, and I think 95% was a number that you guys said, this is what we want to strive to get to. And it will continue to be a goal because you never want to slack off of it. You know, you always want to have, you know, your foot on the gas pedal when it comes to attendance because the moment you begin to slack off, thinks, you know, people think that it's not a priority. So, you know, and, and, and to our staff and all the hard work that our support staff do along with our educators in making sure that attendance is a top priority here. You know, I, I'll go back to it, our kids have challenges at home. And it's not because they're lazy, it's not because they don't want to come to school, but sometimes they don't have the transportation, sometimes they're hungry, like I've mentioned before. Sometimes there's embarrassment, you know, and I don't have the latest kicks, I don't have the latest jeans, you know, whatever it may be. So, you know, we have to kind of break those barriers a little bit to make sure that they understand that there's a long, there's an angle to all of this, you know, you, you can't learn if you're not in the buildings. And I would do want to thank Mr. Perino, you know, when we did our, our building tours and Mrs., oh, there she is, Ms. Crawford's over here, reminded me that, you know, back in 2003, when I first joined the school board, we had a lot of buildings that were running down. You know, we had an elementary school out in Chorley that was running down. We had, you know, we look at the stadium and how state of the art it is now, but we had a track and field that was declared unsafe to a point where we had to bus students to Port Jervis to practice for track and field. You know, and when I joined the board, one of my things were, you know, I, I, I don't want to look poor. You know, our students are already facing those challenges at home. And by giving them a place that they're proud of to come to every morning of every day, I think it, from a mental health perspective and positivity and stuff, I think that helps. And when I mentioned that during our building tours, Mrs. Crawford reminded me that when she did a program at Pace University, there was a course that was, what was the title of it?
Social Capital for School Leadership.
And social ca, and a segment of that was called?
Erasing the Look and Feel of Poverty. And Middletown was the, was the course study that we had to follow.
So our efforts in that regard were noticed enough at a major university to utilize us as a case study on trying to erase the look and feel of poverty for our students. So it, it, it matters, you know, and so I want to congratulate the Board of Education for making things like that a priority as we worked before our meeting today on our goals for this upcoming year. I don't want to ruin the surprise, that'll happen next week, but, you know, we have goals. Continuing the attendance improvement is still part of our, our goals moving forward. So I thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to invite Mrs. Adoma and the summer school admin teams. There are many of them.
Great job, great job.
To talk about summer learning highlights.
Good evening, Board President Estrada, Vice President Williams, Superintendent Creedon, members of the community. On July 8th, we welcome back scholars to our campuses to participate in summer learning and exploration programs. As remind, as reminder, these programs are offered at no cost to families and meals and bus transportation provided to all scholars. This evening, we have our summer school leadership teams with us providing an overview of the programs that were offered. For elementary, we have Mr. Matt Kelly and Mrs. Regina Trout. For middle school, we have Mrs. Jessica LeBron and Mr. Damon Nolan and our high school summer admin team with Mrs. Ashley Merchant, Mrs. Ash, Ashley Pace, and Mr. Andrew Seatonmark. And for extended school year or E S Y program, we have Mrs. Tracy Sorrentino and Mrs. Vanessa Pittman. So I'm going to hand it over to the elementary leadership team to continue.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Creedon, Assistant Superintendent Adoma, President Estrada, esteemed members of the board and the cabinet. As you heard, there's a lot of programs this evening, a lot of things happened for the students in our district, kind of helped create the best summer ever. See if I can get one in your size for you. No problem. So, next slide, please. So on the elementary level, we were able to offer two different programs. One was our traditional summer school. That was for our scholars who were performing below grade level expectations in either ELA, mathematics, or both subject areas in this, after the spring assessments. And we realized they could benefit from some additional support. The other program we were able to offer on the elementary level was our enrichment summer school. Those were our students that we were scoring either at or above grade level expectations and could benefit from a little extra challenge or some push and from some, some exploration. Next slide, please. So on the elementary level, just as same as there's a team behind me, we had a team on the elementary level. The elementary level was fortunate enough that we had teachers in all of our classrooms. We had bilingual educators to help support our English language learners. We had AIS in teachers for ELA and mathematics. We were also able to have ENL teachers. So we were able to really drive home on that small group instruction, where, to maximize the potential that we had with our students. The other feature that was really nice with our summer programming was we were fortunate enough to have those social workers and student support facilitators there. Because as we're always talking about those social emotional needs of our students, where we always say, we don't know what kind of baggage they're coming with, we need to be able to deal with that during the summer as well. So we were very fortunate to have that staff on as well. Next slide, please.
So the attendance at our program included, for traditional summer school, we had 307 scholars. For the enrichment sessions, there were two. The first session, we had 45 scholars. For the second session, we had 73 scholars, for a total of 425 scholars who attended our summer school program. Next slide, please.
So the schedule might look a little busy up there, but the bottom line was is we tried to stick with the flow of a traditional day of school, where students came in, had their pre-fuel, had an SEL block, had an, one instructional block in either ELA or mathematics, and had a second block where that was the opposite subject, either the other opposite, either ELA or mathematics. The only reason it has a little split in it is because we did have to give that, you know, lunch block in the, in the middle. So it did split up the, the second block and then dismissed at, at the end from that. Next slide, please. So as you can see, there are some of the smiling faces. One of the highlights that we noticed was we've been having a very strong push in our literacy area in our district. There was consistent use of the Hegarty and foundations in all of the K-5 intervention classrooms. Any room you walked into, you could hear students talking about basic phonics skills, decoding, blends, diagrams, swooping words together so they could, could become more fluent readers. And these pictures right here are some from our enrichment sessions, where you could see the students literally took literacy camp all the way, literally making their own camp tents. So they had a great experience with it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tag it off to the middle school team.
Good evening, President Estrada, Vice President Williams, esteemed members of the board, Superintendent Creedon, Assistant Superintendent Adoma and Tuttle, district cabinet members, and the Middletown community. I'm Jessica LeBron. And throughout the school year, I'm one of two deans at Monhegan Middle School. This summer, I had the pleasure of being the middle school summer school principal. And next to me is Mr. Damon Nolan, who is a dean at Twin Towers Middle School and was the assistant principal for our summer school program.
Good evening.
So under the middle school summer school umbrella, we were able to provide or opportunities for our scholars in four different programs. We had our traditional summer school, and that was for scholars who were not able to reach a passing grade of 65% in either math or English Language Arts. And they were invited to participate in our traditional summer school. We also had our summer learning academy. Throughout the school year, we have a, a class called AIS, which is an academic intervention service. So our summer learning academy was an extension of that. So these students passed math and, and ELA, but they just needed that extra support. So we were able to provide that for them over the summer. We also had our summer accelerated program, where we invited incoming seventh graders and incoming eighth graders to participate in accelerated classes for math, science, social studies, and in English. And then we had our language bridge program, which was specific to our English language learners who are entering or emerging in their English language acquisition. And so this program actually provided them opportunities to practice over the summer and build upon their English language acquisition through reading, writing, listening, and speaking. Next slide, please. So very much like Mr. Kelly said, at the elementary level, at the middle school level, we had a team. We had 31 classroom teachers. We had us as administrators. We had two clerical, we also had two support counselors. And, and what was good about this too was we had one from each school. So they were familiar to our scholars and they were friendly faces. It wasn't, they, they weren't new faces for our scholars. We had nine security, and we had two student support facilitators. Last year, or actually years past, we've, we've held summer school at the middle school level at Monhegan. But due to the construction that, that was going on at Twin and, and at Monhegan, we actually shared the, the space here at the high school with the high school, with the summer school program and the other camps and programs, enrichment programs that were held here. So it actually worked out really nicely for us. Next slide, please.
Next slide, please. So this is a further breakdown of all the offerings that we had at summer school and the students that participated, 155 took instruction in traditional summer school. 74 participated in the extension learning, the AIS programming. The summer accelerated program, you'll notice they're more in the second cohort than the second. Shout out to those teachers who were able to be flexible. Some of our families that couldn't attend in cohort one who were invited, we were able to move them over into cohort two and, and still accommodate them. And our language bridge program was 32 of our students, for a total of 352. Next slide, please. Daily schedule, what is, and I saw stands out for me with the daily schedule is with the two dismissals, students who really only needed support in one or two areas, were able to come in, get concentrated support on what they needed, and then leave for the day and enjoy their summer. Whereas in our other students who remained for the day, we were able to get a little more focused support as the day went on. Next slide, please.
So a couple of the highlights, specifically with the language bridge program, they, the teachers tailored opportunities for our, our entering and emerging scholars. So they created their own podcast where they sat down and asked and answered questions in English to each other. They practiced with the teachers and with each other, going to a restaurant and how they would order and how they would interact with the staff at a restaurant. They practiced reading and writing and, and asking each other questions based on what they read in English. So these were great opportunities for them to continue their language learning.
And with the accelerated program, there was a really nice expansion this year, going from offering it to one grade to two grades. And students were also, who participated, were able to get instruction in four areas, whereas last year they were only like maybe going to taking algebra accelerated, they got to take a sampling of everything.
So we thank you and we.
Will be followed by the high school team. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, high school team. Well, we, during the school year, Ms. Pace and I, we, we call ourselves A-square, but this summer we were the triple A's. So, you know, we worked very hard together. But again, good evening, Board of Education President Edward Estrada, Vice President on Board of Education, Mitchell Williams, the esteemed cabinet, Mr. Superintendent Amy Creedon, Assistant Superintendent Mike Tuttle, and Ms. Adoma, and all cabinet members. We were very honored this year to lead summer school. I know Ms. Pace and I, we had a lot of academic demands that we wanted to complete with our seniors, but we were very grateful for the opportunity because we learned a lot. We got to really know all the ninth, 10th, 11th graders, they were great. And, you know, again, at the same time simultaneously getting our, our, our 43 seniors to graduate in August. So again, it was just a great job overall with our team. We also had to really work well with the middle school, where we had two summer school programs simultaneously in the building. And I could say that it was, it worked very efficiently, no issues, and it was great overall. I didn't even know the middle school was here half of the time. But again, one of the great things about the high school that we did house a lot of the summer school programs. So again, just a shout out to Ms. Assistant Superintendent Camille Adoma and all her efforts of coordinating with all programs involved. You go to the next slide, please. So this is just an overview of some of the programs that we offered here this summer. Of course, we had our regular summer school program, where scholars had the opportunity to retake courses for credits that they didn't earn during the school year. So there was a lot of credit recovery for ninth, 10th, and 11th graders. We also had various college courses running for rising senior scholars. I want to highlight that we have currently 28 students right now who are seniors who are currently working on their civic seal of readiness right now. They don't, they didn't receive the seal yet, according to Ms. Kuntz, but they are in the progress of receiving that. We're going to be optimistic in June, so great efforts by our instructional leaders, Ms. Kuntz. We also want to thank our Superintendent Ms. Creedon, who worked with our cohort throughout the school year. And, you know, we did present a proposal to her about our senior pathway. And we were very grateful because we had about 31 seniors who really benefited, benefited from that program and were able to pass the Regents exams. So we're very thankful for the senior pathway, which was new this summer. And again, we also had our Regents prep for scholars who didn't pass the Regents exams, and they had an opportunity. and they had an opportunity to either order those courses, or Dr. Connell and Ms. Poole had opportunities for students to receive Regents prep from science teachers. Next slide, please. And then here are just some of our staffing for our classroom teachers. We had around forty-six clerical. We had two clerical who worked with us, who helped us plan everything under the sun. We had certificates that Mr. Seidemark will talk about. They helped us create certificates, bringing that out, helped us for graduation with the programs. I mean, they did a plethora of stuff for us. We had two guidance counselors who were very helpful with parents when they came in for registering students, understanding credits, even for students who were in summer school who weren't hopeful about their future. We were really able to get them to really come in and complete summer school and get those credits that they weren't able to achieve during the school year. So there was a lot of wins this summer for all the cohorts. We also had a social worker this year because we did understand the social emotional demands of our scholars, that they do continue in the summer, and it was very helpful to have a social worker who was there to support with whatever anxiety they have or any apprehension they had of coming to summer school. But again, it was very effective having our social worker this year. What can I not say about our student support facilitators? They were very essential in making sure that we got all scholars who needed to benefit from summer school this summer. As you'll see, our enrollment numbers, you know, is very high, about nine hundred and two scholars, you know, that really benefited. And again, we didn't want to lose one scholar. We wanted that. I know we had the seniors, and we were really focusing on them, but it was also important for us to collaborate with the other cohorts as to what their needs were and what students we really needed to make sure that they came into summer school. And then we also had two teaching assistants this summer. And I'll pass it off to Ms. Pace.
Next slide, please. Hello, everyone. So for attendance, we did have eight hundred and twenty-six summer school students. We had seventy-five students for our college courses. And then our senior pathway this year, we had thirty-one scholars. And for Regents prep, we had a hundred and ten. That makes our total number of nine hundred and two students on our floor. We did split the building, but we did amazing, and it was great to have and host everyone. Next slide, please. So our daily schedule, we started at seven thirty AM, and we have students arriving and having breakfast. We had a twelve forty-one dismissal for like most of our students, but our senior pathway was an extended day program. It went from twelve fifty to three forty-five. Next slide, please. This starts our highlights. I'm going to have Mr. Seidemark go over it, but I just wanted to again mention the graduation rate because we're so excited about it. And they were like, oh yeah, I wore my senior shirt today since we're showing our shirts. And so it was forty-two scholars graduated on August twentieth, and we were super excited about that. And of all thirty-one of the scholars from, that graduated on the twentieth, they took advantage of our senior pathway, and it was an amazing turnout. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Seidemark.
Yeah, and we went into the summer just knowing that, you know, we were going to have a lot of students with us for whom school's not necessarily easy during the year. So we really wanted them to have the opportunity to experience some success and sort of start to shift the way they think of themselves and carry that forward into the new school year. So I just wanted to highlight some of the things that students said to us about their experience. They're right on the board here. Student, one of our graduating seniors said, I just liked the environment, everything about it. It's a little quieter. A freshman said, I felt like I improved more in algebra. My teacher made sure she understood what we were learning about, and she would stop in between questions before we got it before moving on. So students really appreciated that extra bit of attention they got during the longer course periods. Another student said, I feel like summer school is definitely helpful because the teachers apply themselves to students to make sure they pass, so they don't have to retake the classes. That's not to say it's not true of what teachers do during the school year, but having that extra chance, I think, you know, made students really appreciate that extra opportunity to be successful. Next slide, please. Just some images from our program here. One of the ways that we wanted to create that cycle of success when we had the opportunity of the smaller environment was just by having teachers submit just like a brief anecdote, a sentence or two about what students were doing great, and that automatically made them a scholar of the week. And I know on the third floor, you saw that big, beautiful collaborative space. So we papered that over with all the scholars of the week, and kids were coming by, and, you know, they had a rare opportunity. These aren't, again, you know, not often students who get to experience that kind of success, just seeing their name on the board and what they did well. A lot of them took it home, posted it to social media, and had, you know, a lot of positive feedback about that. Down below, he doesn't always look like that, but that's Dr. Woods making that funny pose. And he's just, he deserves a shout out because he's absolutely, absolutely instrumental in helping the senior class achieve such great things every year. He's our trauma coach. Ms. Pace on the bottom right with two of our happy scholars, our fabulous security staff there, that's Lamont, I believe. Is that Lamont? Yeah, okay. And then Ms. O'Connor down below, who had our students out taking pictures in the hallway. So it was a really positive experience, and we're grateful for the opportunity. Thank you.
Do we clap now?
No.
Not done yet. Sorry, see? No, hold it. My fault. Mr. Tony, he's like...
Let me know when. I got it.
They're still not done yet.
John. What are you doing?
You have a new look.
I know. I'm up here. Good evening, all. Great to see all the admins. We've been together all day, all week. So we'll see each other in a few hours. We'll keep it brief. Vanessa and I ran the extended school year program this year at Carter, and it was truly an amazing experience. Next slide, please. Our students in the extended school year program, that is part of their IEP. So those students, we partner with our Committee on Special Education, ta-da! And they are deemed as needing an extended school year program in accordance with the Part 200 regulations. This is to prevent regression. The program has been extremely successful in that regard, and we're seeing unbelievable results, especially out of our eight-one-two non-verbal students, because we keep with the devices, we keep with their therapies, and it really has provided the structure and support academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally. So we'll be able to go back into September without that big of a gap. Next slide. On staff, we had two admins, Vanessa debuting in her building role. We had twenty classroom teachers, two clerical, our psychologist, CI, two student support facilitators, twenty-four teaching assistants, and thirteen special education aides. It truly does take a village where we are. We all pitch in, and it really gives the students an opportunity to interact with all sorts of different people through all the routines, plus get the targeted support they need in the classroom. We have our SRO was there, our nurse came with us, Donna Gressler, and we had security. Next slide. Next slide. No slide. Our students were in what's called singletons, meaning they stay with one teacher all day. But within that, we have our eight to eight fifteen AM arrival, where they get off the bus, they go and pick up their own pre-fuel, excuse me, and then go into class. That's a huge goal for us with some of our little guys. We then have a ninety-minute ELA block, ninety minutes of math, SEL. We incorporated Phys Ed this year, which was a huge success for our scholars. They were able to participate in activities that really helped their physical and their wellness, but also got to experience Phys Ed in a different environment for the first time for some of them, and they managed that change amazingly. So a lot of social gain and communication gain as well in Phys Ed. Refuel, they went to the Carter Cafeteria, which is a lot bigger than the Truman Cafeteria, and they did super. We managed that. Our wind block, what I need, and then we have a closing circle every day to transition before we get on the bus. So we stagger our classes to make sure that their therapists, because they come with us, speech, OT, PT, counseling, that all gets intermixed in that. However, the children do not miss their core ELA and math each and every day. Next slide. You go, girl.
Hello, everybody. So we had scholars from grade one through grade twelve participating in our program with a total enrollment of a hundred and sixteen scholars. Next slide, please. So we had such an impactful summer at ESY. All of our elementary classrooms, similar to the elementary school held over at Maple Hill, utilized Hegarty foundations and the Scholastic Math Camp to support the specially designed instruction linked to their individual IEP goals. And new to the program this year, like Ms. Laurentino said, we offered physical education daily to all classes throughout the program. Multiple of our scholars have been recommended for less restrictive environments after this summer's progress, and all of our scholars progressed towards achievement of their individual goals. Support, student support facilitators, and our crisis interventionist pushed into all classes during the social emotional learning block weekly. They engaged in, you know, collaborative discussions and working really towards the essential characteristics that help our scholars grow outside of their academics, but just as beings. And our scholars also engaged in a culminating activity at the end of the program to just celebrate everything and all the hard work that we did, which are some of the images that you can see there on the screen. Next slide. And lastly, in collaboration with Superintendent Creedon, Assistant Superintendent Adoma, Director of Special Education, Ms. Tagny, Assistant Director of Special Education, Ms. Dominguez Post, and the entire cabinet team, we were so excited to have the scholars engage in the Day Rock Music Program. It was a two-day experience, interactive music experience, where our scholars had the opportunity during a forty-five minute session each time to play the bass, the drums, the keyboard, sing every instrument that they could to their favorite songs. And it was amazing to see their personalities just shine through. We are so proud of all of our ESY scholars and staff for an amazing summer. And with that, I will kick it off to the summer program, the enrichment programs.
Next slide, please. All right, so in addition to our summer school program, we offered twenty-eight summer exploration programs, and we're going to talk about all twenty-eight tonight. All right, so we'll just talk about a few. So these programs were offered for scholars who were in kindergarten through eleventh grade. We had over eight hundred and twenty scholars participate in these camps. These camps varied from one to three weeks in length and appealed to different interests such as music and arts, STEM, and sports. Joining us to share some highlights from some of our more popular camps would be Mrs. Elizabeth Rodriguez, Mrs. Evelyn Sanchez, Mrs. Elizabeth Bowler, and Mrs. Tiffany Hall.
Next slide, please. So good evening, Superintendent Creedon, Assistant Superintendent Adoma, President Estrada, and all the members of the board, and to all the families and communities. So first, we want to talk about the Language Immersion Program, El Programa de Verano Linguístico. And we should also have our director, Linda Rivera-Broth, as she was the lead for this program. So this was a two-week program where we had scholars immersed in both English and Spanish, and we used a thematic-based approach. And Ms. Rodriguez will talk about those themes in a moment. We had thirty-eight scholars across grades K to eleven sign up for this camp. There was a lot of interest.
Good evening, buenas noches. The program was very exciting for the students. They were so eager to join, and the families to make sure they had an opportunity to engage in this particular camp. And so we had the students K, levels K two, that participated, and their theme was La Familia, my family. And they had to learn Spanish terms and speak with their peers. Then we had also three-five, they were doing the, their theme was the community, school community. And that was also very engaging. Then we had the high schoolers decide what country they really wanted to study. And as you could see from the images there, the students said on the last day of the camp, they presented to each other, it was a gallery walk. And it was so exciting. You could see the students interacting with one another, sharing their presentations in Spanish, you know. And one of the things that was also interesting, as we talk about making sure that students are interested, and how when they're interested in the lesson and what's happening in the classroom, they're going to behave. There was one incident when I ended up having one student in my, in the office, in the principal's office, and one of the things I said to him, you know, if you don't behave, you're not going to be able to stay in the program because it's not that long. And he said, I'll behave, I'll behave. I said, but you like, you like to learn Spanish? Yes, I don't want to go home. So that was very, you know, motivating to us to continue the program. This was very exciting to watch the kids interact, collaborate with each other, and share. They were so proud of their work. And by the way, we did have permission for those pictures that you see there. As a matter of fact, the one in the quarter right there in the bottom, there's the teacher presenting the students' work, because of course, we didn't have permission for that. But it was very, very exciting, and the kids loved it. And the parents did as well, because we encouraged the teachers to keep communicating with the parents and sharing pictures with the parents. And so that communication was ongoing. So muchas gracias, thank you very much.
Next slide, please.
Good evening. We're delighted to share our Reading Around the World Camp, which was a wonderful week of exploration and adventure. Each day, the scholars came in, they were thrilled, and they just learned about many cultures, various animals, even, we even did character education. And at the end, we had a wonderful trip to Thoreau Library, which you see through the
This is our second year of this program, and we tripled in size this year. Our kids were super excited. And we actually had four teachers, two media specialists, as well as two teachers that paired up and collaborated together, which was super exciting. And of course, it supports our love for reading.
So just wanted to thank the board again for your support with our summer programming, and we're open to any questions.
So thank you very much. Awesome job. Awesome job, and it's a testament to all your hard work throughout the summer. And I think where you see the benefit of it will be in September when everybody comes back and you don't have to, as Ms. Laurentino mentioned, regress, you know, and start all over again. So with that being said, we'll go around the table. We'll start off with Mr. Perino, since he had the first question.
Thank you, President Estrada. Just a couple of questions. High school, how many, how many credits can a student obtain in the summer? Student who doesn't achieve the necessary credits to graduate?
So it's three credits for grades nine through eleventh, and then for our senior pathway, it was about seven credits.
Okay, the regular, regular students who...
For ninth through eleventh grade.
Nine through, nine through twelve. How many credits...
It'll be three credits.
They can obtain three credits in the summer?
So it'll be three classes. And it also depends if it's a half a credit. So it just depends on what the student needs, like if they need a physical education course versus just a content class.
Is that the maximum they can take in the summer?
Yes.
So if a student does not, needs more than three credits in the summer to graduate, more than three credits, that means they have to do, let's say they, they're down by six credits. If you're down by six credits, that means you can only obtain three in the summer?
So that's why we wrote a proposal to Superintendent Creedon, because we knew that there were some seniors who needed more than three credits. So that's where we, we also didn't want to exceed more than five classes for those seniors because again, you don't see time is very important. But we also felt like we do have some students who wouldn't have benefit from that because they needed more than what we could offer in summer school. But again, we, we had to select those seniors, which was about thirty-one students who needed more than those three.
So if they needed more than, than three credits, they could theoretically then be allowed to take them during the summer?
Only seniors at this time.
Only seniors?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay.
And this was the first year that we did that. We had the senior pathway.
The, I noticed that classes are approximately an hour and a half. Is it difficult to maintain interest of the students at that time? I know we have a very talented staff at the building.
I want to say through our observations of the classes, again, this is, we really, we had town halls for our students during summer school, so we were very explicit with our expectations that this is not the time to really regress, and this is not whatever habits you develop during the school year, like this is your time to regroup yourself. And we really had that time for them to reflect, like what is your purpose now in summer school, to really think about that? Because again, instructional time, like that seat time is very important. So even when we did our observations, a lot of students, they were engaged, because again, every student's academic demands were very different. There were some students who needed to take a Regents exam, so they understood, like, I need to pay attention in order to pass. So again, every teacher that we observed, they were very engaging. You know, there was one class in particular that I observed where a teacher was actually doing an escape room during a summer school program, and it was very in-depth, but again, all the students were engaged, and this was also going to help them pass the U.S. History Regents.
Well, you and your staff did an amazing job, and it's, it's truly amazing that a student liking more than three credits, a senior, can obtain as many as want, six credits in the summer?
Yeah, and it was our pilot.
That's a lot of work.
Yeah, it was, and that's where we were there. You know, Ms. Pace and I, you know, we understood that we would be there till four o'clock in an afternoon, and we understood that we were willing to do that, because again, these are students that they did have a very challenging school year, and we didn't want to give up on them, but we did see them really flourish. Like students that weren't really getting 80s or 90s in class, they had that instruction from teachers who they cared, they created a culture within the classroom where, you know, one of our challenges that we did speak about was like, are they really going to stay here till 3:45 PM? And they actually did. And we did provide, you know, food and nutrition services, they're just great. Just want to shout out, you know, Ms. Burr and Ms. Bishop, they provided snacks for our students, you know, they love snacks. But again, you know, these are students, I think at this point, again, when we, when the Triple A's, when we talked about summer school, we were very, one thing about us, like our expectation from day one is like, you know why you're here, let's make the best of it, you know? And if there was any situation that we needed to mitigate, we did call parents in, we did have meetings, you know, we treated it like a regular school year, because we understood that not only were we in charge of the seniors, but ninth, 10th, 11th grade, they also had, we had a responsibility to make sure that they also passed the Regents in the classes and things of that nature. But again, our seniors, you know, these are students that didn't want to come out their bedrooms. These are students who, you know, they didn't know what their purpose was during the school year. So again, you know, we were very intentional with the senior pathway, that we didn't want kids just to think that you can come and just get a passing grade, like you really had to work for it. And our, you know, I want to give a shout out to our senior pathway teachers, where they really had a curriculum, you know, they would send us their lesson plans, and it wasn't just worksheets, like they really were writing essays, you know, they were proofreading what they were writing, they were doing Regents exams. You know, students were really able to really overcome whatever deficits they had during the school year, and they stayed till 3:45. And these are some of the students that they received a certificate of like Student of the Month, and this was like the first time that they were like, wow, like they actually recognized my hard work, and from day one, like they kept coming back. But I think they knew at this point, like, we want you to graduate, and that was the tone that we set for them.
Is the, the yonder pouch policy still in effect in summer school, or is that...
Yes, it was, it was in effect in summer school.
Still in summer school also. Well, again, you did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work you've done.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Mr. Rett.
Yes, I really enjoyed the opportunity to hear from all the grade levels and how you rolled out the curriculum and instruction plan and keeping kids on task throughout the school year. Couple of things that really came to my mind that I really liked is the early childhood, the elementary programs, because as we work on our goals as a school board, some of the things in particular Andrew was talking about was the enrichment. How do we keep kids continually involved in building, you know? And how do we accelerate student learning from elementary to middle school? Oh my gosh, did y'all hear any of that? I think I was on a pretty good roll there, man. But yeah, and how, and how it rolls out from, from level to level. Another impressive thing was the number of students that you had in so many programs to keep that continuum alive, because we know when kids go home at the end of the school year, and they come back in the fall, they drop a whole level, you know, and it's like starting over again, starting from scratch. So these programs, several that you guys talked about, you know, the enrichment, those who are trying to make up for lost numbers that they did throughout the school year. That was very impressive. Also, and we continue to look more at, as a board, what's happening from elementary to middle school, because I think somebody mentioned before, it seems to be, we all are pretty clear on what's going on at the high school. Maybe it's because we meet here and we're in contact and we're having conversations with a lot of high school people. So it was really great to hear from the elementary and the middle school. Couple of questions I wanted to ask is, with the AIS program, we know that that is so powerful in working with those kids in those specific areas that they're struggling. Do the elementary and middle school kind of, do you guys kind of build on one another noticings and wonderings? And if somebody from maybe the elementary school can tell me, how do y'all continue to build on that continuum in preparing kids to get to middle school?
So absolutely. In the elementaries, we actually have, for AIS reading, we have foundations and integrity, as you guys were hearing that. And while the kids are getting older, we also have Bridge the Gap and Just Words for our word recognition. Middle school actually has that program as well for scholars who may need that. So that is one way that we're bridging our gaps there. We also have that, all of our AIS nodes, so if a scholar was struggling, you would have a record or portfolio, an AIS portfolio for a scholar, and that moves up into the middle school as well as the high school. And so you would continuously see that product throughout the years as well. So those are two ways.
Right. And constant progress monitoring and reports. We convene with the teams and discuss the progress of scholars and where they are based on state performance and district-based performances.
Yeah, awesome.
So with that, our system, which currently is RTIM and has been for a number of years, that is from kindergarten all the way to 12th grade. So that is a management system that just keeps all the records, all the notes, anecdotal records, and so you could see that information over time as well.
Awesome. Yeah, and I think what you just described, which is really good, that they can recognize that staircase of complexity as they move on. One more thing I wanted to ask is, this was very cohesive, it was coherent, you know, in hearing the different instructional levels and how you're tending to them. I didn't hear anything about, and I was wondering if somebody could tell me about how criteria charts and rubric charts where children can reference their own learning. Can you tell me a little bit about that? Because that also helps in preparing them for the exams, so that they can know exactly what they have to do to get a high score on an exam, on state exams.
You're talking about with respect to writing, or what are you looking...
For all, for all subject areas, reading, math, writing, testing, yeah.
So it's going to, it's going to vary based on grade and subject, so it's not one particular, one particular rubric that we're using for each grade level?
The students are...
Yes, so they have rubrics, but they're not the same for, you know, ELA, math, third grade, sixth grade? So we do have...
Yeah, we're about in, not the next presentation, but the following presentation.
Two presentations, yeah.
We're actually going to touch upon that.
Oh, okay.
So you set us up to excitement.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rett. I do, and this is not to quell any, any discussion or interest, I just do want to remind the board, we do have five presentations tonight, so. Mr. Estrada needs to get to the paying job tomorrow morning, so. Nevertheless, Mr. Tobias, then.
I just want to commend each of the presentations. I think that all of us took something away from every single one. Some of the questions that I had did get answered, like for example, Tracy, Mrs. Laurentino. I'm wondering if it was an elementary-through-high-school program, and I was surprised to hear you state, yes, it was. I think some of the expressions from those students that you had featured was just heartwarming, you know, to see their expressions of self-confidence, of achieving something, not to take away from anyone else, because I'm hearing, I'm hearing very, very positive comments from the high school and what you folks did to instill a reason to be there and, you know, their motivation then to graduate. So to every single one of you, thank you, it was a commendable job.
Thank you, Mr. Tobias. And Mr. Moore, anything new and compelling?
I just want to say, I'll give kudos to Superintendent Adoma for your oversight of the entire summer program. And, and just the number of students that took part in the program, it seems to be growing, and I'm definitely happy about that. Just one last thing before we go, is just, can you just express how many credits is needed for a high school student to obtain, like the hours is needed to obtain a credit? Because I think that will answer your question of how many credits they can take for the No, the number of hours required for a credit for high school.
Yeah, high school graduation credits.
Yeah. Twenty-two. No, no, I'm talking about the number of hours per credit, because...
I will, I will email you tomorrow.
All right, cool, no problem. But that, that will pretty much answer his question of how many classes they can take during the summer.
Yeah, there's no seat hour requirement, because they're not taking these courses by and large for the first time. These are courses that they haven't demonstrated success in, so these are courses that they are re-engaging with after they have already, for the most part, met the seat hour requirement previously.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Freddie Williams.
Yes, great presentations on all levels. Having a student in the district, my son, coming up, starting in first grade, all the way going into eighth now, it was, it's a pleasure to hear how intricate the process is from every level, and, you know, just kudos to you guys, appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Mitchell Williams.
I'll reiterate on what my brother Fox, Freddie Williams, just said, excellent job, excellent job. You worked intentionally, you know, that's what's so impressive about it, hitting the mark. One of the highlights that I see is, not only did you address the kids who were struggling with different areas, but also the kids who were doing great, you challenged their mind. Because a lot of times, that doesn't happen, and that's so impressive to me that you did that, because, you know, you would think that, okay, well, a lot of times, you'll just concentrate on, even as parents, we'll concentrate on the kid that's not, you know, where they should be, and so the other kid is like, no, they're okay, no, 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 we're going to challenge them too. And that's so impressive and a great summer, great job.
Yeah, I'll just second what everybody has already said, but you can kind of gather through some of the questioning from the board members, the direction from a goal perspective. We talked earlier about what board goals were going to be, that a lot of our goals, we've done a lot over the years with the high school and the secondary level, but there has been board discussion about being too secondary-centric, so to speak, and we wanted to make sure that there's big communication, especially at the elementary school levels. We understand that we have shortfalls when it comes to a lot of our early testing in the lower grades. I don't, personally for me, and I've communicated this to the board in general, I don't get caught up as much on those tests, because we got to be doing something right if kids are not testing in first, second, and third grade but graduating at a 93% clip. What that tells me is that if the kids are here from beginning to end, we're getting the job done. The question is, how can we support at the lower, lower grade levels, provide whatever additional supports are needed from a Board of Education perspective? Because the earlier you get to them, the better the outcome. The one question I do have, the experiment that was kind of resulting because of construction this year, where our middle schoolers did their, their enrichment here at the high school, I started thinking, what a great way to motivate our middle school kids than to see where the end goal is. So I'm wondering if, in your idea, that maybe that's something, now, you know, obviously from a logistical standpoint, if it was too much, but I'm kind of hearing that it kind of worked well, so I'm wondering if I can get some feedback on whether or not it's something that we might consider continuing doing despite the construction.
So the way that it worked was we had the middle schoolers, they were in a different part of the building than the high schoolers. So that, that's what worked well. We also had staggered time, so they didn't, everyone didn't come into the building at the same time, so we actually did our best to keep middle school in one part of the building, high school in another part, and it went pretty well.
But do you think that the middle schoolers enjoyed coming to this environment versus had they gone back to their respective school during the summer? Kind of like, you know, sometimes when you're at work, you want to go to a different place and not be in the same office every day?
Yeah, I think there's, there's advantages to this building, but also too, just for the sake of being able to focus on learning, it's a lot easier just to have two different, you know, different spaces. So previously, we were at Mont Hagen, and that's the structure that from feedback seems to work well, because it's a smaller space, it's not too overstimulating when you have all the high school areas, plus we have the camps, so it seems, the preference seems to be still to have a separate area, because sometimes when you see the older kids too, you want to spend time with the older kids, and that can also be a little bit of distraction,
Perfect, thank you so much, guys. Great job, everybody. Hey, Mr. Donahue, now you can clap. I've just, I've just been told that you're not next.
Oh, there we go. We have a presentation as well, but we are here middle, you're kind of midway point, and why we could spend all night up here talking and amplifying our impact, and we're going to discuss the social emotional supports, we're going to try and keep this as brief as possible. So, good evening, President Estrada, Vice President Mitch Williams, Superintendent Creedon, Assistant Superintendent Adoma, Cabinet Members and Board of Education. So again, we are here tonight to discuss all the social emotional supports and how we are continuing to amplify our impact throughout the school district. So if we could go to the next slide, please? One more? Thank you. All right, so what you're seeing here is an example of our system of scholar support, and at the center of what we do, and all we do is our scholars, right? And then what you're seeing surrounding is all of the support staff that we hear, that we have here in Middletown. And we truly are fortunate to have the opportunity to work with so many caring and compassionate stakeholders, all of whom make up our, you know, Middletown system scholar of support. And we really want to take a moment to amplify and call out that part of our system of support is our parents, guardians, and caregivers. And what you're going to hear about through tonight is all of the work that our support staff do in collaboration with our families, guardians, and caregivers, because the ultimate goal is that our support staff are working with our scholars, so they can generalize their skills... so they can generalize their skills and take those into the community. And what you're hearing tonight in all of our summer programs is, you know, what all these support staff do year-round, and how we continue to work with families and create partnerships with the community. And so I will pass it to my team to dive into the highlights of all of our support staff. Next slide. One more, please.
So, hello again. So here you are seeing a comprehensive continuum of the staff across our enlarged city school district of Middletown. We'd like to express our gratitude to the Board of Education and the broader school community for their ongoing collaboration and partnership with all of these professionals. Their contributions are essential to our school community and district culture.
So we just want to highlight some numbers for our district. There are 16 social workers that work with pre-K through 12, 22 school psychologists, nine crisis interventionists, and 15 student support facilitators working with grades K to 12, four homeschool liaisons, and three trauma coaches working with grades six through eight, 16 guidance counselors, and three scholar support counselors in grades six through 12, eight Orange County Department of Mental Health counselors working with K through 12, 81 security guards, and 82 food service employees working with scholars in grades K through 12, and finally, 19 registered nurses and LPNs working with all scholars in pre-K through 12.
Next slide, please. Next. Okay, so you see a lot of support staff, and thanks to the support that you provide our district, we are able to have huge impact on our scholars day-to-day. When we speak about attendance, when we speak about summer programs, when we speak about creating safe environments for our scholars to want to be here, it's thanks to all of these staff members. And so just to highlight some of the work that they do day in, day out. So with our partnership with the Orange County Department of Mental Health, they work with the totality of last year, 153 scholars. And not just the scholars, they also work with the families very closely. And through that, they delivered 1,730 sessions. When we think about our school psychologists, right, just our district K-12, they have supported through CSC and IEP recommendations about 500 scholars. And we think about 500 scholars and those mandated counseling sessions. In total, last year, they were about 15,320 sessions. That's amazing work that they do day in, day out. When we think about our social workers who support our scholars with 504s, through mandated 504 counseling, we had about 160 scholars that they delivered and met with in different individual and group sessions, about 6,680 mandated sessions. So when we think about all of that love and support that we are pouring into our scholars day in, day out, it's just so impactful, and it's what's making them want to come, right? Not just delivering academics and providing that support, but that social emotional support that Middletown does so well. And these are just mandated sessions, right? On a day in, day out, they are supporting with crisis, they're supporting with families, they're going and doing home visits. They're going above and beyond for all of our scholars. So we also have just some other additional highlights from this past year. We had about 61 support staff ends, all of our administrators engaging in professional development on restorative circles. We had, as you see here, Mr. Branson excited that his contract was approved tonight. Yes. He celebrated over 100 visits throughout the district. And when you see Branson walk in a room, it changes your mindset, it changes your mood, it changes everything. I remember when we were over at Mont Hagen, and I see Branson walking in the hallway, and the kid was like, "Oh no, I'm so scared." And then I was like, "Why don't you just try it?" So he starts petting him, and he's like, "Man, if I had a dog every day, I'd come to school every day, no problem." And it's just like, just an amazing connection that they were able to make. And thanks to you guys for approving and supporting that, that he will continue his legacy and his work this coming school year. And some additional highlights, but don't want to keep you here all evening, because we can. I will pass it over to Tiff and Christine to talk about what's to come.
Next slide, please. So when we talk about continuing to enhance and amplify our scholar support, we just want to talk about our guiding principles and ensuring that we have safe, healthy, and supportive environments. So through this work, we think about the culture, the academic leadership through our social emotional learning supports.
We, in coordination with New York State Education Department, have placed a high priority on creating safe and positive school environments where our scholars can experience social and emotional growth that support their academic achievement. Restorative justice practices are well-aligned with this mission. We're working to support the use of these five Rs of restorative justice in order to guide our work in continuing to grow a peaceful, productive, and positive learning environment.
Next slide, please. So I'm really excited about cultivating the classroom. This is a professional development session that's very dear to my heart. Just a wonderful session, and we actually did it at our new educator orientation, where we looked at research-based practices from the Culture, Response, and Sustainable Framework and Dr. Zaretta Hammond. And the purpose of it is just to talk about how it's imperative to build those relationships in the classroom with our scholars. So we looked at the signal to the brain in the sense of the physical, psychological, and social safety so that learning is possible for all scholars. Next slide.
And we'd like to conclude our presentation with this quote that aligns with our work. "The goal of restorative practices is collective healing through connection." Thank you for your time this evening.
Now, now you have Mr. Donahue.
No, not, not yet, not yet, not yet, no.
No, no, no. Actually, we're next.
First. Does anybody have any questions for the group, or are we good? Mr. Perino?
A question, comment, I'd like to know, not necessarily this evening, but I'd like to know more about restorative justice, that, that practice, when is it used, when it's not used, and so on. Doesn't have to be tonight, but we're starting, we're starting this in the district, I take it. The state, as I, I think I said last week, is emphasizing.
The state is emphasizing.
Yeah, and so we're actually a little bit ahead of the curve. We started this work last year. And so what we highlighted here is all the work that was done with our staff in the, this previous year, and that we're gonna continue to do this upcoming year. And so we will absolutely provide you with additional information. But we're really excited for the opportunity to continue the restorative practices, and we really feel like we are ahead of the curve, as we, we did jump into a lot of this work last year, which has been pretty amazing. And the scholars have really, you know, embraced it. And I know that all the support staff have been starting to utilize this in proactive ways. And that's really the key, is building those connections, so that way when scholars are in crisis, you can, you know, come together, collaborate, and have that healing together.
I believe with using that in the middle schools and in the high school this year, is that correct?
In all of our schools.
All of our schools, all of them. Just a, a quick question, because I was able to ask Mrs. Creedon about it, and I think the board probably would, they'd be intrigued to know about it. So, trauma coaches don't exist at every school district.
No.
Can you tell us a little bit about what exactly a trauma coach is?
So, trauma coaches are really unique to Middletown, and we have them sixth through 12. And what's really amazing about our trauma coaches is that they are actually there to support and coach our educators. So they're working with our educate, our educators, and how to work with our young people in supporting, you know, different, you know, experiences that they've had, trauma that they've had. And they're really amazing. All three of our trauma coaches are very involved in our scholars' programs, and they really do a phenomenal job in getting all of our scholars to that finish line. As you saw, that very excited Mr. Pat Woods in the earlier presentation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have, sorry, Mr. Donahue, but according to this agenda, it says grading for equity, K-5 grading expectations. Oh, you're on next week's agenda.
Next week.
I hope everybody submitted absentee ballots for the general election in November, because we may still be.
We're all falling asleep over.
Good evening again. In June, we shared with the Board of Education and the community the process that had occurred the last two years for educators and administrators to examine and revise our grading practices, to establish consistent grading practices, provide clear communication to scholars and families regarding the scholars' knowledge, knowledge and skills, and to reduce bias in the grading process. Over the last few weeks, we have been sharing these changes with our families through in-person and virtual town halls and at orientation events. Now, you will hear from some of our, some, sorry. Now, you will hear from some more of our instructional leaders to learn more about the changes that are occurring at the elementary level. So I bring forward again, Mrs. Liz Bowler, Mrs. Tiffany Hall, Mrs. Elizabeth Rodriguez, and Mrs. Evelyn Sanchez.
Good evening again. So as we talk about establishing consistent grading practice, we're delighted to share with you how we look at communication to our scholars. So, one-on-one meetings, more than intimate setting, to provide detailed feedback as far as assessment and progress in work. Being transparent, full honesty, and an open door about the grading system.
All right, and as far as communication to families, of course, that's ongoing. And so, the parents use the parent portal to view the student's interim report and the report cards. But it's not limited to that, right? They have class dojo, they have access to the teachers, make a call, make appointments, and meet with the teachers to discuss their scholars' grades, evaluations. And so I have to say that during the kindergarten orientation and even new student orientation, parents took the opportunity to go to the main offices where the clerical was able to help them, to sign them up. Also, we, you know, certainly told the parents, if they're not able to do it at that time, during open houses, during parent-teacher conferences, it's very important for them to, and there's always someone from technology there to assist them, to make sure that the parents have access to this information. Then, of course, we have the family-teacher conferences, that the parents schedule appointments with the teachers, and they're able to talk about their students' progress. And of course, those are opportunities for them to highlight the achievements and areas of concerns of improvement for their scholar. And then we have a third column that has to reduce biases, ensure fairness in evaluation, right? So we want to make sure that it is transparent and consistent across the board. Second, promote self-awareness and equity in grading. You know, give the students an opportunity to also take part in evaluating their progress, their strengths, and areas of growth. Third, include peer assessment to provide diverse perspective. That gives the students an opportunity to also critique each other and give each other feedback, which is very important. Along with also encouraging collaboration and fostering a sense of community in the classroom.
Next slide, please.
Good evening again. So at the elementary level, we use standards-based grading, so that way we can assess the students' learning and progress. And the standards-based grading, what we focus on, is a specific skill set, the mastery of that specific skill set and the knowledge. And that's based on the New York State curriculum standards. So here, that's just the sample of the elementary report card that is accessible to all parents and families through Infinite Campus. And what, instead of using the traditional methods of like letters or numbers, the students are graded on a one-through-four scale, and momentarily will look at that scale more in depth. And with each standard, there are various indicators. And students can receive a plus, which shows that they are really dominating in that area. Or they receive a slash, which is satisfactory performance, and a minus, which showcases that they just need improvement. Next slide.
Okay, so with the retake and redos, it gives the scholars an opportunity to retake assessments and exams using actionable feedback that is given by the educator. With the redos, the opportunity also to do an entire assignment or project based on effective feedback. Next slide, please.
So this year, we'll also be continuing our common assessments that we have throughout the district. These include such as in ELA, our Early Literacy Assessments, and Mathematics, or Skills Checks. In our next slide, if you can, yeah, we have some examples. For these examples, up on the screen, you'll see that we have some of our screeners in ELA, which are our CBM reading assessments. We will sit and listen to a child read to determine their automaticity and where their weaknesses may be. From there, we then move on to some of our diagnostics assessments that you'll see up there with our phonics and vocabulary. From there, then we also have some of our common assessments that we'll have as our progress monitors throughout the years, such as our writing benchmarks. It goes along with what you were talking about earlier with rubrics. So if you look in the middle one, you'll actually see that in our primary grades, we actually started this rubric to, last year was our first year with it. So we'll be going into our second year. And we're looking at the developmental writing continuum. And so in kindergarten and first grade, we'll see where the student is regarding their fluency in writing. And once they show that they have their fluency in writing, we then will move into the six-plus-one traits rubric, where then you'll see that in the upper grades, and we're seeing their growth in writing. And then for mathematics, you'll also see our skills checks. And this is them looking deeper into the skills that they're learning throughout the year.
Next slide, please.
And I think this is really what you wanted to see. So here we have just the basic overview of the rubric that is utilized. And you, going through the whole spectrum, Level 1, the scholar is below grade level standard. Two, they're approaching. Three, the child is, or the scholar, at grade level standard. And four, the scholar is exceeding the grade level. And then all the subjects are listed. We just put a little asterisk next to ENL, grades that are received, and Spanish Language Arts, as that's not applicable to all scholars within the district. Next slide, please. And thank you.
So I do want to remind the board that grade six through 12 grading will be done at our next meeting on September 19th. Any questions for the group? No, thank you so much. I, I do have just one. Have you had any parental feedback yet from any of the communications that you've had about whether they're confused or not? Because one of the things with this is that, you know, here in Middletown, we do not believe in social promotion. You know, and I think you guys as administrators, especially in the middle and the secondary levels, have unfortunately been on the receiving end of students from other districts where social promotion was prevalent. And there's nothing worse than having somebody come in and think they're in ninth grade, and really they're testing at seventh grade, because they're really behind the eight ball. You know, when students are here from K through 12, we do an outstanding job. It's a lot harder when they come in in ninth or 10th grade and don't have the support skills that they need to get to that level.
So, so far, we actually already had two parent town halls, or family town halls. One was virtual and one was in person. And we actually received a lot of great feedback. The parents were super excited about where we were heading. And they were really able to ask many questions that they may have not realized about the grading system that we were able to speak to them about. So that was really good feedback we got, talking about it. Did you guys want to add anything to it?
Yeah, I would say we had positive feedback with the opportunity for scholars to have their retakes and redo. their retakes and redos, because it's a way for them to look at areas of deficiencies or where they can show growth and really look forward from the feedback to actually make actionable steps to progress.
And one of the more memorable comments was simply just along alignment. So would this be something that was being rolled out across all schools? And how would the teacher preparation end for like retakes and redos also be communicated?
I just want to add one thing, though, just to, you know, recognize that this is the second year that we are in this project. And there were teachers after the board last year, or a year and a half ago, gave us the permission to move forward with this project. This team really brought this forward on their own and said, let's try this, let's get a pilot together. And all of last year, there was a really committed group of educators and administrators that piloted this and received feedback from families, their colleagues, and young people for an entire year before they made the recommendation to move into this work this summer to make it a full-blown district initiative. So there was great opportunity for some committed educators, families, and scholars to guide us through this work.
So one of the things that I found, even with the new student orientation, is parents having communication and knowing how, or messaging from the teachers, knowing how they would be able to have access to the students' grades. So I think that, because many parents are coming from New York City, and so the system there is different from here. So I think it's just making sure that they are aware on how they could obtain their students' grades and interim reports. So, and that's something that I'm sure is shared during the parent-teacher conferences with the families. That's very important, otherwise they wouldn't know.
Peace de resistance. Yeah, motion to adjourn. Mr. Donahue, high school master schedule.
I was gonna say, you saved the best for last, but I think that would, there was a lot of great presentations tonight. So, good evening, President Estrada, Vice President Williams, Superintendent Creedon, members of the board, members of Middletown community. I am thrilled to be here tonight to talk about and just provide a little context and information about our new master schedule or enhanced master schedule. We did send out a mailing August 2nd. If you had an opportunity to see that, it kind of laid out some of the ideas, reasons, and rationale, and we're here tonight to talk a little bit more about it. And I just want to say, before I turn it over to Ms. Koontz, who very much said, do not go off script, and in light of this late hour, I will not, there's a whole lot I want to talk about. But every decision we make at Middletown High School, and will continue to make, starts with this. And in the middle of this is our young people. Every single decision, what is best for our young people? What is going to enhance their experiences? They're the ones walking through for four years, and we have an obligation to always be thinking through those lenses, even if it means taking a non-traditional path. And I say traditional in the sense of what we've done in Middletown for a very long time, and taking a look at everything. Is this benefiting our young people? If there's a different way we can do it, we are going to look into it. So what we're here to talk about tonight is the culmination of a long process of planning and the hard work of many, many individuals, including our guidance staff, administration, our IL team, just working together, putting this together. And so I'll turn it over to Ms. Koontz to provide a little more detail about our enhanced master schedule at Middletown High School.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Good evening, President Estrada, Ms. Creedon, members of the Board of Education. Thank you for inviting us to share some exciting information with you today. We're here to discuss an enhancement to our high school schedule that we believe will significantly improve the educational experience for our scholars, the addition of more double periods into our nine-period day. As you know, the demands on our scholars are increasing, not only in terms of academic knowledge, but also in critical thinking, problem-solving, and real-world application. The traditional single-period schedule, while functional, often does not provide the time and flexibility needed for in-depth exploration of subjects, project-based learning, and meaningful interactions between scholars and with educators. So we want to share our why with you. We live in a time when our scholars are competing against scholars around the nation and around the world. At some point, a college admissions officer or a hiring committee will be looking at our scholars' transcripts to decide whether to accept them or deny them, award them a scholarship or not, hire them or reject them. Because we know this, we have invested time and effort to enhance our schedule so that time spent in the classroom is impactful to scholar outcomes. Our goal is to create deeper and richer experiences for all learners. The enhanced schedule helps us reach our goal. So we do have a brief video to share that explains the shift in more detail.
I'm Morgan Cardinal, a senior at Middletown High School and Student Council President. I have some exciting news to share with you about an enhancement we're making to our school schedule starting this year. Starting in September, we are introducing more double periods that will run every other day in addition to single periods that run every day. This change will allow our scholars to dive deeper into their subjects, engage in more hands-on activities, and have more time for collaboration and project-based learning. These double periods will provide our teachers the flexibility to incorporate more diverse teaching methods and provide additional support to scholars who need it. Our goal is to enhance the learning experience and ensure every scholar has the opportunity to succeed. It's important to note that the overall structure of our school day will remain the same. We will continue to have a nine-period day that starts and ends at the same time, with this new enhancement fitting seamlessly into our existing schedule. We also still have X and Y days. All of our amazing electives, academy programs, college courses, and opportunities at CTEC are still available to all scholars, all while reducing the number of classes each day and reducing the number of transitions between classes. It's truly a win-win for all of us and helps us better prepare for life after high school. In addition to the double periods, Middletown High School will also be implementing a more equitable grading policy for all content areas for all scholars. All content areas will be following the same grading scale that has been approved by the district administration. The grading scales will be on all teachers' syllabuses that go home at the beginning of the school year. We understand that every change comes with questions, and we are here to support you through this transition. Please feel free to reach out to us with any questions you may have. Thank you for your continued support and partnership in making Middletown High School a place where every scholar is a legacy maker. Together, we can make Middletown High School an even better place for our scholars to grow and succeed. Thank you.
So families can, families can access the video on the district website, where they'll be able to make sure they, you know, hear Morgan's wonderful narration, as well as there is a script in Spanish available for families as well. So we're most excited about the opportunity for deeper learning and engagement, and this means that scholars will have more time to ask questions, engage in discussions, and participate in hands-on activities. With longer periods, educators can implement more project-based learning, which has shown, been shown to improve critical thinking and collaborative skills, two skills that employers consistently report young employees are lacking. Scholars can engage in projects that require research, group work, and presentations, all essential skills for college and career readiness. Extended class time also mimics the schedule of many college courses, so this helps us better prepare scholars for the demands of college coursework, making the transition smoother and increasing their chances of success. Lastly, this enhancement reduces transitions for scholars throughout the day and reduces the number of scholars in the hallways between periods at points during the day. So thank you for your time and your support with the schedule enhancement. We are really excited to launch it next week and welcome the scholars back. Thank you.
Thank you. See? We saved you for the end to provide that extra energy, right? No, that was awesome. And listen, you know, we joke about it sometimes, but please know that as a Board of Education, we are thoroughly engaged, and we want these presentations, we enjoy these presentations. And so please keep bringing them to us, because it keeps solidifying in our minds that we're headed in the right direction. We continue to head in the right direction. So, does anybody have any questions about the scheduling?
No, but it might be a nice idea at the end of the first term marking, November, so to hear how it's been going, an update.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think one of the things that I enjoy about it, especially with the video, is, and we had this conversation earlier as board members, is making sure that our students are part of the implementation and formation, even through committees, because ultimately they're the ones that have to buy into it. And how easily it happens for them versus how hard it happens to them, I think a lot has to do with them owning part of the process. So as long as we make them feel like they're owning part of the process, they're going to try to make it work themselves. So, thank you very much. It was awesome. Mr. Rat.
Just a comment. Those blocks of time, those 90-minute blocks, that is incredible. That's a game changer. It gives more attention to detail and engagement. So, and I think you made a good point about movement throughout the building, kids are in classes a little bit longer. So, again, come in, you guys, great job.
Thank you. And just to add, last year, we started, this has been almost like a two-year project in terms of doing research and, you know, researching the benefits and the drawbacks of implementing longer periods. But we have, here in Middletown, we, at the high school, we have had double periods in some sections, particularly in our special education, some of our AIS classes, and we have just seen really tremendous growth, in particular in our special education subpop at the high school. So we felt really great launching, and we use our teachers, our current educators, who have that experience teaching in a double period, to help us really lead the professional development with our educators this past year. And we've also done a lot of work and shared resources around taking breaks within the classroom during that 80-minute block, because that's a long time to sustain attention. So really making sure that we're using brain breaks appropriately within the classroom.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Thank you, Mrs. Koontz, and your team as well. Good luck next week. Good luck to everybody next week. And as we move on in our schedule here on our agenda, please do not feel obligated to stay. I know you guys have worked very hard this week and continue to work with the rest. The board's got to stay, but everybody else has got a lot of work still. So we want to thank you for coming out tonight. Hopefully you're not.
The answer is.
So we'll move on now to our board member conferences and professional development shareouts. Mr. Perino, AI.
I have an order here. No AI tonight, please. We still have three more presentations.
Does that happen?
So I'm skipping it, and it's 9:30.
Does that happen to be in Ms. Tobiasin's handwriting?
And I'm gonna leave in about another 10 minutes.
Does that happen to be in Ms. Tobiasin's handwriting?
Handwriting.
It did look like it. Are you sure you want to delay it to the next one?
We'll do it next time.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's just too long.
Yeah, artificial. So, yeah, Mr. Tutter wants to know if that's really Mr. Perino saying that, or was that AI saying that?
AI.
It's the robot saying that.
Yeah, see?
So in lieu of that, we'll bypass, unless anybody has specific committee reports that they want to, but I definitely would like for our next meeting, for committees to outline what their next step is as far as meeting dates and stuff like that, because we want to get the ball rolling. That's our next, once board goals and norms are done, we should get into that habit of doing that, so.
Audit committee already has their schedule.
All right. Cool.
9:30.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Mr. Rat, we're going to bypass committee reports, but with the understanding that for our next meeting, I'd like to have an outline from each of the committees as to meeting dates, who their committee people are, and what their charge is going to be, if you get what I mean. All right? Sound good?
Sounds good.
Okay. So that being said, do we need roundtable?
No.
At all? I think we're good. I think everybody covered a lot of that during recognitions and announcements. So, motion to, Ms. Tobiasin, what's next?
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Only, should I?
Listen, for members of the public, please, congratulations on a great summer. Good luck and God bless on a great school year for 2024-25 here in Middletown. Have a good night. We do have an action item-only meeting next week, no public participation, along with a board workshop on September 5th. We will see everybody on September 19th for our next public Board of Education meeting, at which time we'll know what happened during the first week of school. So God bless everybody, have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.